Post.
Oh, yeah. How you doing?
Yes, sir. All right, Timmy, we got to get rolling.
Hi.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
It's the limit.
Yeah.
Keep them to that.
Yeah.
And remember, we can't say it's worth it.
I don't blame you. All right, gentlemen. Are we ready?
Yes, sir.
Ms. McCluster, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call the order. The Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Business Meeting on Tuesday, December the 17th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. Board meeting room at 39 Bank Street, Southeast Chatham, Virginia. Ms. McCluster, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Mr. Dudley.
Present.
Mr. Hyde.
Here.
Mr. Ingram.
Here.
Mr. Whittle.
Here.
Mr. Tucker.
Here.
Mr. Dalton.
Here.
Moving to item three. Would everyone join me in a moment of silence and then we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
...to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Moving to item five. Are there any items to be added to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to add planning commission appointment for the Chatham Blair's District to the consent agenda as item seven L.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, we got a motion by Mr. Bowman and a second by Mr. Dudley. Any further discussion on the motion? Not hearing any, we're ready to vote. Motion carries unanimously. Moving to item six. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Sir, move.
Motion by Mr. Ingram, a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bowman. Any further discussion? If not hearing any, we're ready to vote. Motion passes unanimously. Moving to item seven, our consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition that we added earlier, sir.
All right. Got a motion by Mr. Dudley, a second.
Second motion.
Second by Mr. Tucker. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, we're ready to vote. And the motion carries unanimously. Moving to item, oh, it's gonna be seven J. That's on, oh, presentations, item A, eight A.
VACO.
Oh, two, VACO Achievement Award Presentation. Ms. McCluster.
Yes, sir. You can come on in.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the board. Mr. Chair, interim minister is Shorter. My name is Jeremy Bennett. I'm Director of Intergovernmental Affairs with the Virginia Association of Counties VACO. And it is my pleasure to be with you here tonight in Virginia's largest county in the Commonwealth. And it is also doubly my pleasure to be here tonight after I was able to enjoy my own mini Chow Down at J&amp;T's for dinner. You have an excellent eating establishment and I hope to be back sometime to present again. But it is my distinct pleasure and privilege tonight to present the VACO Achievement Awards. And just briefly, for the benefit of your constituents, you may not be familiar with the Virginia Association of Counties VACO. We've existed since 1934 to support your efforts as county officials. We do this through many ways. First is through our advocacy at the General Assembly and also at the federal level. We also serve counties through our educational programs, member services, and communication efforts. In 2003, we established our Achievement Award Program to recognize counties that have adopted innovative approaches to providing public services and identifying programs that could serve as models for other counties to emulate. And today, I am proud to present Pennsylvania County with the Achievement Award for the Downtown Chow Down Program. This is our 22nd Annual Achievement Award. We received a record 145 entries this year, of which only 45 winners were selected from 32 counties. So this was a truly competitive program as only 31% of entries were selected as winners. And, you know, our judges use several criteria. You know, does the program offer a innovative solution to a problem situation, deliver your services? Does it promote intergovernmental services? And is it a model that could be used for other counties? So definitely, what I've read about the program and the event, it seems like it went off very well and I hope you're doing it again. But I know that there are folks in the audience and from your staff who could brag about that program a little bit better than I can, just reading the summary. So I think at this time, if it's all right with you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Invite Holly to come up to the podium and maybe with members of her team to talk about the program. Okay. And then once she's done, if it's all right with you, Mr. Chair, maybe we can just get a picture so we can then.
Absolutely.
Share that with the rest of our members across the Commonwealth.
Yes, sir. That'd be fun. And we got two Hollies now. You gotta designate which one. Both thumbs up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I think everyone here knows everyone on the event committee, but first I want to just take an opportunity to introduce everyone. Kaylin McCluster, Holly Kazee, Kelsey Myers, and Mallory Roland. And we are so honored to accept this award. Very quickly, it started out as an employee appreciation event where we got the idea to invite food trucks to come to Chatham and we would do an employee appreciation event. So we gave employees a voucher for a certain amount of money. They could come that day and it was so popular. We got back together and we said, well, how can we make this even better? How can we engage our citizens? How can we engage businesses into this event? So that's exactly what we did. We started promoting that with the help of Diana, our PR manager, to the businesses, to our citizens, and it has been wildly popular. And we will continue it as long as people still come and want to have great food and eat. So would anyone like to say anything? But we are honored. Thank you for this award. Yeah.
And I think just before we do the word, it's around the clock.
Yeah. Sure. Yeah. We got two more presentations. We'll come down. We gonna take a picture? We got two presentations. Well, good evening. I have the honor of presenting two certificates of recognition. So would, Ms. Patsy Carter come forward, please? Patsy Carter. Is that you? Come on up here with me. Ms. Carter, I have, oh, we have you a chair coming here. Come on, sit down here. All right, Ms. Carter. Thank you so much for being here tonight. You doing well? Ms. Carter, I have the honor of presenting you with this certificate of recognition because you live in my district, but I expect you want to thank my friend and colleague, Mr. Robert Tucker, because he was the mastermind behind this. So let me read this to you, okay? And it says, "The Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors expresses sincere congratulations to Ms. Patsy C. Carter as she recently celebrated her 101st birthday." 101, she said. All righty. She was born on November the 26th, 1923, on the Pritchett Farm. Ms. Carter began her educational journey in the Pennsylvania County Schools and completed her studies in New York, where her lifetime commitment to learning and excellence took root. Her 20-plus years as a precinct chief judge exemplified her dedication to democracy, ensuring fair and organized elections. A devout member of the Bethelwood Cross Church, Ms. Carter embodies faith, resilience, and compassion. Her independent lifestyle, I think y'all saw that, didn't you? Passion for gardening and active commitment involvement continue to inspire all who know her. Her sharp mind, strong spirit, and unwavering commitment to her civic service, faith, and community values are a source of inspiration and pride. It is a great pleasure to send you the best wishes and warmest congratulations on this amazing milestone, and we hope that your day was filled with everlasting joy and pleasure. Happy 101st birthday, Ms. Patsy C. Carter." Y'all give her a hand. Ms. Tucker, would you say a word or two, please?
I just want to say happy belated birthday to Ms. Carter. Yes, ma'am. And it's always a blessing from the Lord to have a centurion in our midst, and it is a testament of just how well the Lord has blessed you, and we thank you for your contributions to your church, your community, and also your family.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Ms. Carter, I don't mean to put you on the spot no more than you already are, but would you like to say something?
Well, I appreciate being here. And I have received a very warm welcome. Most of the time, I'm not gonna say a whole lot because people say I talk too much. So if I start talking, but I'm glad that I'm living here in Pennsylvania County and I have enjoyed it. And I plan to, as long as the good Lord says so, I will be here. But when he says it's off, then I think I've done my duty.
Ms. Carter, do you have any more family members here or just granddaughter? Okay. Oh, the niece. Any more family members here? We gonna shoot a few pictures. That's hers, okay? Y'all give her another hand. I do. I got one more. Yes, sir. No, I'm good. Well, young ladies, it's gonna be hard to beat that. With the players and coaches and staff of the Tunstall High School volleyball team, come forward, please. Again, thank y'all for coming. This is a certificate of excellence. The Tunstall High School volleyball team had a wonderful 2024 season characterized by remarkable achievements and unwavering dedication. With an impressive overall record of 21 and 3 and an undefeated district record of 12 and 0 during the regular season, extending the 14-0. With tournament games, the team demonstrated exceptional skill and teamwork. Tunstall proudly claimed the titles of Piedmont District Regional Season Champions, Piedmont District Tournament Champions, advancing to the Region 3D Quarterfinals with a victory against Abington, and making a strong appearance in the Region 3D Semi-Finals. Your outstanding accomplishments this season have brought immense pride to Tunstall High School and the community, showcasing the power of hard work, determination, and teamwork. And as I often tell them, I'm a 1975 Tunstall model, so I'm really proud of you. The Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors expresses its deepest congratulations and admiration to the Tunstall Lady Trojans volleyball team with these accomplishments and wish you the very best in your future endeavors. Given this date, December the 17th, 2024, William V. Ingram, Tunstall District Supervisor, and Darrell W. Dalton, Chairman of the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors. Thank y'all so much. Y'all give him a hand. Congratulations. Moving to item nine, Hearing of the Citizens. Each person addressing the board under Hearing of the Citizens shall be a resident or land owner, loan, land owner of the county and the arrested agent of such resident or land owner. Each person shall step up, give his or her name and district in all the tone of voice for the record. And unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her address to three minutes. No person shall be permitted to address the board more than once during the Hearing of the Citizens. All remarks should be addressed to the board as a body and not any individual member thereof. Hearing of the Citizens should last for a maximum of 45 minutes. Any individual that signed up to speak during said session who does not get the opportunity to do so because of the aforementioned time limit shall be given speaking priority at the next Board of Supervisors meeting. Absent chairman approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. Ms. McCluster, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir. Joanne Roberts.
Welcome, ma'am.
I appreciate it. I had a lot to say. Three minutes is gonna be tough. I'm Joanne Roberts. I live in the Banister River District and a member of Mill Creek Church, and I'm speaking on behalf of our church and three other churches that will be negatively impacted, our services and our community activities. If the zoning is approved to change the residential and the farmland in that area to heavy industrial in order to allow the Bellico data center. I went by and saw a data center the other day, and I think if anybody actually saw it, they would never in a million years vote to put one of these things anywhere close to a residential area. I don't have time. I've spent a lot of time researching and I understand I only have a couple minutes. So I'm gonna speak about one of the things that is extremely important and hasn't really been dwelt on too much, and that's the amount of noise put out by these data centers. What I've researched is that the, each generator can generate sound up to 50, between 55 and 85 decibels. The more generators you have, the more that sound is amplified. So it can become a very large sound. You can imagine one blender and then adding 12 blenders to it, how loud it's gonna be. You can't talk. And at 85 decibels hearing, if it's exposed more than eight hours a day, causes deafness, not may cause deafness. Positively without a doubt, data shows it will cause deafness to people and animals in the area. I'm gonna give our churches an example. We would be surrounded on three sides by this horrendous building with all the generators and huge smokestacks, and it would be. And it would be so close to us, it would be hard to even have church services. And we would not be able to do any of our outside activities. You can't have a normal conversation, like within six feet of people at that sound level. And this sound travels approximately two and a half miles from the center of these generators. So this sound is gonna disturb more than just 1,000-plus people that it's gonna be on top of, but also people further spread out. So it could possibly affect Chatham Hall and businesses in the town of Chatham. And it said it's a very far-reaching detrimental effect upon the entire community. I just said, okay, do I have more time left? I wanted to mention something that someone told me just a little while ago. It wasn't about the greenhouse emissions, it was about the volume of water. It takes about 5 million gallons of water
30 seconds remaining.
That Hert cannot meet that requirement. They have one pump, and it's not working. And it would cost Hert millions of dollars to install the pumps necessary to pump the water here. And it'd be just as easy to put a gas pipe up to Hert if they wanted theirs as it would be to pipe water down here. So I do wanna say one more thing, and I'm sorry. I just have a picture of people who normally would sit out in their yards, listening in the evenings to the crickets
3 minutes is complete.
And the frogs. And they won't be able to do that anymore because all they hear is and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Curtis Jefferson.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Board of Supervisors. I came last time we had the meeting to talk to y'all about. I'm Curtis Jefferson from Dan River District on Paradise Lake and Campground. And I came last time to talk to y'all about the detrimental effect that new zoning change would have on our businesses. And this time, I guess, instead of going over the whole, hashing the whole thing over again, I'd like to say we would like to meet with our representatives 101 and have a discussion about it, you know, what we can really talk about. And it's just standing for three minutes. I really can't. I really can't get into it in three minutes. So it'd be greatly appreciated if we could get together and talk about this before y'all decide to vote on this new zoning laws for us. Because it will shut us down, I mean, there's no doubt about that. And it's up to y'all. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Jeff Love.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. Jeff Love, Stanton River District owner of Leesville Lake Campground. The Berkeley Group located in Northern Virginia and their chief spokesperson Caroline Van Turgey, who only started with Berkeley Group in March of 2022, didn't correctly modify the proposed county zoning document. They completely discarded their current language and replaced it with a template. The proper way to modify a document is to strike through changes, put the revised text in red. Due to the Berkeley Group's incompetence, there is no way to compare the current zoning with the proposed zoning. The county campgrounds alerted the Berkeley Group about this major issue during the December 2023 Open House. During the Open House, it was clear that the Berkeley Group had no intention of using proper procedures to modify county zoning. Contracting with the Berkeley Group was a huge mistake and a waste of taxpayer dollars. The zoning proposal may very well put all county campgrounds out of business. Since many specialized transient workers stay in county campgrounds, the proposed changes will also negatively impact the county's ability to attract and develop new businesses, the ability to repair and maintain county infrastructure, and eliminate traveling, healthcare, and other essential workers, and also discourage families from moving to our area and contributing to our economy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Amy Walker.
Welcome, ma'am.
In 2008, my husband and I moved from North Carolina to the 12th Level Community. And at that same time, I became the admissions director at Hargrave. And of course, in 2008, 2009, what happened? We had a big recession. It had impacted everybody, including, of course, Hargrave. And I can remember many a day sitting across the desk of Colonel Baker, our president at Hargrave. And we would have discussions about, what are we gonna do? And he said, Amy, we've gotta be smart. And one of the things he would say is, Amy, short-term fixes can result in long-term ramifications. He was a smart man. And I remember that comment. And now, as I look at the Ballico proposals, it comes to play again. Because I see something that's the fix-all. I see text messages going out, and it sounds like Ballico is the answer to all our ills within Pennsylvania County. They're promising all kinds of things and all kinds of wonderful things. It's like dangling a piece of candy in front of a child. And what happens when you dangle candy in front of a child? They grab for it. They don't ask questions. They don't check to see, hey, is this legitimate? Is this good? They just grab it. But you know, the other part of his comment was in long-term ramifications. And as the candy is sweet, the ramifications, they're ugly. They're destructive. They destroy community. They destroy farmland. They destroy roads and environment. And they destroy the quality of life for the residents. So I come here tonight, the message to hear for me to give you tonight is, please do your homework. Please don't be tempted by the candy only. You know, learn the facts. Learn the cost. Learn the long-term ramifications. And then vote no to Ballico in February. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Amanda Sinkwadner.
Welcome, ma'am.
Well, good evening, gentlemen. Amanda Sinkwadner, the Gretna Collins District. And tonight, I represent the Friends of Whittles and Concerned Citizens, Chalk Level. Well, I've gotta tell you something, fellas. Chairman Darrell Dalton just took the wind out of my sail. I had a riveting 10-minute address for all of you. But you know what I'm gonna focus on instead? Christmas gifts. Tomorrow, in the Star Tribune, we're gonna have a rezoning request that's gonna be printed up, requested by Ballico LLC, or in code language, Ballyhoo. They're gonna share a really pretty picture of 760 acres, 15 power sources, 18 entrances, and Phase 1 on the map only leads to the future phase, clearly stated on the desk of Emily Ragsdale. Now, I'm gonna tell all of you something, the citizens in large and you gentlemen on the board. We paid $500 for a Freedom of Information Act request that has spelled out a number of details. And none of them look too good. But I'm gonna share some of those stories for later. What I'm gonna tell you is that we have a Christmas wish list for all of you. You wanna hear what it is? We wanna see from you, board, courageous leadership. We wanna see from you, board, critical thinking. We wanna see from you, board, common sense. And we wanna see from you, board, a healthy dose of due diligence. We want to see from you, board, a big fat no to the Ballyhoo Boys in February. Ladies and gentlemen of the county, is that what we want to see for Christmas? That's the best Christmas gift? That is the best Christmas gift that any one of you board members could ever share with your concerned citizens at large? Now, I know that many of you think, well, that Amanda Wadner, she's certainly hard. But actually, I'm not. I have a big heart, and I'm compassionate. And I have a heart for my family, and I have a heart for my neighbors, and I have a heart for this county. And you know what? If you don't remember anything else I'm about to say, I want you to remember this. And I hope I can get this right. Are you ready? We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. We wish you a Merry Christmas. And a happy New Year. God bless you, board. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Angelie Harvey.
Welcome, ma'am.
Thank you. I feel so inadequate following that performance. That was amazing. My name is Angelie Harvey. I am from the Gretna Collins District. And I am the owner of Smith Mountain Campground in Pen Hook. My campground is located at the northwestern tip of Pennsylvania County. It's just off of Route 40 near Carl's Diner, if anyone knows where that is. I'm here to speak about the proposed zoning changes specifically for campgrounds. Hopefully, the board has noticed that for the past year plus, the campground owners of this county have been present for your meetings and have been speaking. Sorry, I'm trying to follow my notes so I'm on time. We have made phone calls. We have sent email messages. And we have made requests to meet with the board as a group. I think meeting as a group with all of you is the best way to go. Just to discuss our concerns, but our efforts have gone unanswered. There are many items in the draft that we do not agree with. But the proposed maximum stay of 180 days will actually be the nail in our coffin. Our long-term guests, whether they be seasonal guests or whether they be essential workers, are the cornerstone of our business. They also support the surrounding businesses, such as restaurants, minute markets, and many other businesses like garages. I'm sorry. I'm trying to follow here. When I do better in my business as a campground, my surrounding businesses also do better. They feed off of my campground. You, the Board of Supervisors, you will destroy the camping industry of Pennsylvania County if you vote yes to these zoning changes for campgrounds next month. I am here to ask you one last time to please vote no to these zoning changes. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
That's all, Mr. Chairman.
That's all. All right. Thank you. All right, moving to item 10. A rezoning public hearings. Pursuit to Article 5, Division 6 of the Pennsylvania County Zoning Ordinance to the Board of Supervisors have empowered to hear and decide specific zoning issues, zoning map changes, in support of the said ordinance. In accordance with this task, the board is responsible for promoting the health, safety, general public welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. The board must ensure that all the decisions and regulations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, and its posterity. Case, moving to item 10-1 in case R-24-024. Ms. Ragsdale. Welcome.
Case R-24-024, Danny Dosse has petitioned to rezone 30 acres located on State Road 634, Blue Ridge Drive in the Collins-Gretna election district from M1 Industrial District Light Industry to A1 Agricultural District to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent parcel zone A1. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. On November 7th, 2024, the Planning Commission recommended by a 7 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Danny Dosse is here to represent the petition.
Thank you. At 7:39, I'll open the public hearing for case R-24-024. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, sir.
All right. At 7:39, I'll close the public hearing for case R-24-024. Mr. Dudley.
Yes, sir. Mr. Dalton. In case R-24-024, make a motion approving the rezoning of 30.0 acres from M1 Industrial District Light Industry to A1 Agricultural District to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent parcel zone A1. And, Mr. Chairman, that is my motion.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Dudley, a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Height. Any further discussion? If not, we're ready to vote, gentlemen. All right, motion carries unanimously. Zoning has been approved. We move into case R-24-025. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-24-025, the Washington County MD and the Franklin County Pennam Home Mission Boards Incorporated have petitioned to rezone 9.84 acres located on State Road 40, East Gretna Road in the Collins-Gretna election district from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District to allow for a cemetery on joint church property. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. On November 7th, 2024, the Planning Commission recommended by a 7 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Elwood Martin is here to represent the petition.
Thank you. At 7:41, I open the public hearing for case R-24-025. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. At 7:41, I'll close the public hearing for case R-24-025.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. In case R-24-025, make a motion that one, the rezoning of 9.84 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agriculture District, so that a cemetery can be placed on the property be approved. Two, the rezoning requested in case R-24-025. Is this to be denied, Emily? Okay, because it's got on here, denied as submitted. So I'm gonna say approved. So that's my motion to be approved.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, a second. Second. Second by Mr. Bowman. Any further discussion? If not, we're ready to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion carries unanimously. It's being rezoned. Thank you. All right, moving to case R-24-026. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-24-026, Russell Wells has petitioned to rezone 0.287 acres located on State Road 612, Wyatt Farm Road in the Collins-Gretna election district from A1 Agricultural District to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent parcel zone R1. Once the property is rezoned to R1, all uses listed under Section 35-222 are permitted. On November 7th, 2024, the Planning Commission recommended by a 7 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Russell Wells is here to represent the petition.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing at 7:44 for case R-24-026. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, sir.
Thank you. All right, at 7:44, I'll close the public hearing in case R-24-026. Mr. Dudley.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. In case R-24-026, make a motion approving the rezoning of 0.287 acres from A1 Agriculture District to R1 Residential District, Suburban Subdivision District, to allow property lines to be adjusted. And that is my motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Mr. Dudley, a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Height. Any further discussion? If none, we're ready to vote. All right, motion carries unanimously. Property is being rezoned. Moving to case R-24-027. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-24-027, Ricky and Ellen Childress have petitioned to rezone 19 acres located on State Road 760 Music Street in the Stan River election district from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agriculture District to allow for agricultural uses on the property. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. On November 7, 2024, the Planning Commission recommended by a 7 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Ricky and Ellen Childress are here to represent the petition.
Thank you. At 7:45, I open the public hearing for case R-24-027. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. At 7:46, I'll close the case for R-24-027. Mr. Dudley, the pleasure is yours.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. In case R-24-027, make a motion approving the rezoning of 19 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agriculture District to allow the property to be used for agricultural purposes. Mr. Chairman, that is my motion.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Tucker. Any further discussion? Not hearing any? We're ready to vote. Motion carries unanimously. Your property is being rezoned. All right, moving on to case R-24-028. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-24-028, Herman Cook Jr. has petitioned to rezone 2.34 acres located on State Road 869, Stony Mill Road in the Westover election district from A1 Agriculture District to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent parcel zoned R1. Once the property is rezoned to R1, all uses listed under Section 35-222 are permitted. On November 7, 2024, the Planning Commission recommended by a 7 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Herman Cook is here to represent the petition.
Thank you. All right, at 7:47, I open the public hearing for case R-24-028. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, sir.
Thank you. All right, at 7:47, I'll close the public hearing for case R-24-028. Mr. Whittle, the pleasure is yours, sir.
023, isn't it?
No, 028 is the case I've got.
In case R-24-028, I make a motion approving the rezoning of 2.34 acres from A1 Agricultural District to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to allow property lines to be readjusted.
Second. All right, motion by Mr. Whittle, a second by Mr. Ingram. Any further discussion? Not hearing any? We're ready to vote. Motion passes unanimously. Property is being rezoned. We move into case R-24-029. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-24-029, Angela Benton has petitioned to rezone 13.76 acres located on State Road 644, Cooksburg Road in the Callens-Gretna election district from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agriculture District to allow for the placement of an accessory structure on the property. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. On November 7, 2024, the Planning Commission recommended by a 7 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. Staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Angela Benton is here to represent the petition.
Right, thank you. At 7:49, I'll open the public hearing for case R-24-029. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. At 7:50, I'll close the public hearing for case R-24-029. Mr. Dudley.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. In case R-24-029, make a motion approving the rezoning of 13.764 acres from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agriculture District to allow an accessory structure to be placed on the property. Mr. Chairman, that's my motion.
Thank you. A motion by Mr. Dudley, a second.
Second.
All right, second by Mr. Bowman. Any further discussion? Not hearing any? We're ready to vote. Motion carries unanimously. Property is being rezoned. All right, moving to case R-24-030. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case, excuse me, case R-24-030, Noah and Lori Haas Stettler have petitioned to rezone a total of 12.04 acres located on State Road 802, Hotness Mill Road in the Vanister election district from M1 Industrial District Light Industry to A1 Agriculture District to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent parcel zoned A1. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. On November 7, 2024, the Planning Commission recommended by a 7 to 0 vote with no opposition that the petitioner's request be granted. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Noah Haas Stettler is here to represent the petition.
All right, thank you.
Did you say 12.04 or 7.4?
Zero.
Okay, I've got 7.4 here.
It might be a typo in my end.
In the motion. Okay, so it is 0.4?
Mm-hmm.
That's reasonable.
Is that what it says in the, look in your staff?
It's 12.74 right here.
Okay, that's a typo on my sheet, so I got that.
Okay, I just wanted to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. At 7:52, I'll open the public hearing in case R-24-030. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, sir.
All right, thank you. At 7:52, I'll close the public hearing in case R-24-030. Mr. Dudley.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Make a motion in case R-24-030, make a motion approving the rezoning of a total of 12.04 acres from N1 Industrial District Light Industry to A1 Agriculture District to allow property lines to be adjusted. Mr. Chairman, that is my motion.
Motion by Mr. Dudley, a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Height. Any further discussion? Not hearing any? We're ready to vote. All right, motion carries unanimously. Case is being rezoned. All right, moving to TNB, other public hearings. Each person addressing the board under public hearing shall step up, give his or her name, industry, and his or her place of residence. For non-county citizens, on an audio tone of voice for the record, and unless further time is granted by the chairman, shall limit his or her time to three minutes. Speakers for a group shall be limited to 10 minutes. Speakers shall conclude their remarks at the time unless the consent of the board affirmingly given the extension to the speaker allotted time. Absent chairmen, approval, no person shall be able to speak who has not signed up. We have a public hearing on the Pennsylvania County Code Amendment. That's Ms. Ragsdale. You are popular lady tonight.
Yeah. So I'm handling this kind of on behalf of public safety because these are more codes related to public safety and their role. But before you, our proposed amendments to Chapter 9, which is motor vehicles and traffic, Chapter 12 offenses, and Chapter 17, which is a solid waste disposal ordinance for the county. And we've been having discussions with public safety. They had some issues where they have regulations that are in state code, but we had not adopted them in local code, such as open burning, disposal of construction debris. So if you tear down a house, per state code, it's illegal to burn that because there, you know, asbestos and things like that that need to be removed, even if you do a controlled burn. That is illegal in the state of Virginia unless all of those things are removed prior to the structure being burned. But we had not adopted that in county code. So any citations that they had to issue, all of that money was going to the state. There was nothing that we could enforce locally. There was also nothing that they could do to write tickets for people parking in front of fire hydrants and things like that. So we have amended those codes to include basically the exact wording that is in the state code. We are just baking that into our local ordinances. And then the fire marshal will likely be bringing back to you next month proposed fines that they would like to have adopted. So if they do get to a point where they do have to write a ticket to someone, they have set amounts that those tickets would be for. But there is, this has been advertised as legally required, and the red line versions are in front of you.
Thank you, Ms. Ragsdale. All right, at 7:55, I open the public hearing for the Pennsylvania County Code Amendments. Do we have anyone signed up?
No, sir.
All right. At 7:56, I'll close the public hearing for the Pennsylvania County Code Amendments. All right, pleasure to the board. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'll make the motion approving the attached revisions to PCC 9-110, 2, sorry, 12-21 and 17.6 as presented.
All right, second. We've got a motion by Mr. Tucker and a second by Mr. Ingram. Any further discussion? Not hearing any? We're ready to vote. All right, the motion carries unanimously. Moving to item 11. Do we have any unfinished business, Mr. Evans?
No, Mr. Chairman.
No, any new business?
No, no, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Moving to 13, matters from the work session. Do, we don't have any from work session, do we? Don't think so? Thank you. All right, moving to item 14, our board members' reports. Mr. Whittle, would you like to start, sir?
Well, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir. Don't want to leave you waiting, sir.
We didn't want to have to go behind Keenan's back. See, people here might want to go home.
Yeah, that's right.
But I want to just thank the staff and thank the board and appreciate everybody coming out and putting out on the line how they feel about things. And I just want to tell everybody to have a Merry Christmas.
All right.
And I want to thank Mr. Short for all he's done for us over the last couple of months. Thank you, Mr. Short.
Thank you, Mr. Whittle. Moving to Mr. Bowman. You have anything, sir? You don't have anything?
You know I do. You know I do.
Next. Just move on with it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So last month was filled with many holiday activities. We had a great Thanksgiving. My family and I, we went down to Charleston. So that was a very nice trip. We attended a lot of parades locally. The cantatas and Christmas celebrations were fabulous. We went to Moffitt and to Mount Hermon Baptist. So they did a great job there. Really, really great events there. Attended the IDA meeting that they had this month. I held my own quarterly meeting with my Chatham-Blair's committee appointees. Great meetings there. So for any of the supervisors that aren't doing that, I would encourage you to. If you'd like, I'd be glad to sit in and help you organize that. But it seems like those folks are having a good time exchanging information back and forth. Attended the Chatham Historic Christmas Celebration. Participated in the Chatham Parade and the Gretna Parade. Attended the Broadsville Library Open House. Met Kim out there. Did a great job. Did not see the Grinch. Did not see Santa. But it was still, it was a great, great open house. Attended the DCC Foundation Celebration, of course, the RIFA meeting, and the Local Emergency Planning Committee meeting. Attended the URW Chamber of Business After Hours. And, Mr. Height, that was an excellent event, by the way. That was wonderful. Attended the Ways to Piedmont Planning Meeting. For those that don't know it, the meeting that we had, the special meeting, we had Proven Project Cambridge out there at Ringgold Industrial Park. That is a super project, and we're very fortunate to have those folks locate within our industrial park. Attended this morning the Caesar's Grand Opening. If you haven't been to Caesar's, now's your time to go. As a matter of fact, at 8 o'clock, which I think is right on the button, they're doing fireworks there at the Smokestacks tonight. So great, great facility. Get a chance, go in there. You don't have to play the machines. Just walk through and look at it. You'll be amazed at what they've done. Congratulations again to Holly, both Holly's and Kaylin and Kelsey and Madeline for winning the VACO Award. That was super, super event there. And the Chowdown is a great event, so thank you all for doing that. Want to wish Brenda, my wife, happy birthday this week. Wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Mr. Short, thank you very much for the time that you've been filling in as the interim. And Diana McFarland, I heard that you're retiring next month. I hate to see you go, but congratulations and thank you so much for the work that you've been doing for Pennsylvania County. We appreciate that very much. Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Ingram.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving. And I did want to make mention of the opening of the new Harville-Sonders Parkway to remember Corey Harville and his efforts toward the Mega Park as well as Sherman Saunders, existing city councilman. And it was their vision that brought forth the Berryhill Mega Park. Also, the announcement of Micro Porous, which is the largest industrial announcement in the history of this county. It's only $1.351 billion. And so when you compare the $215 million that's been invested since 2008, I think we're going to get our money back. I did want to recognize Ann Jenny. She was the president of the Vipers Hall of Old Here Fire Department. Ladies auxiliary. And her husband Jim works for Mike Taylor. But she stepped down as president of the club, and she's done a wonderful job. Specifically, if you'll add to mention, everybody that's helped out with hurricane relief, hurricane efforts in the Carolinas as well as southwest Virginia. And there's still people working and doing marvelous things to help those people that have lost everything. And I specifically wanted to mention Devin Taylor, who used to work for the sheriff's office. Devin had this dream, this vision, to start a ministry called Campers Care. And he has gifted so many of those folks with campers. And just recently, there was a lady that once lived here that moved to South Carolina that lost her house to fire. And doggone if you didn't send her a camper, all the way to South Carolina. And also, he had a new ministry called Cabins for Christ, where they're building these small cabins for those, once again, that are without a home. December 7, we remember Pearl Harbor. There's still some survivors. And I always think about those soldiers and sailors that we lost and the survivors. This past December 8, we remember Terry Barker that worked for the sheriff's office that died in line of duty. It had been 20 years ago. Also, this past week, remember Trooper Gene Cash. He passed away five years ago, one of the finest troopers that ever worked this county. And I do have to congratulate our city colleagues on the opening of Caesar's. It's a pretty neat deal they got going on over there. And in closing, I have to try to compete with Mr. Bowman here because he always has such a nice laundry list. But Diana, thank you for your time with us. And I hope you have a great future with your retirement. Just don't get involved in politics. If you want to be happy, don't do that. Darrell, this might very well be your last board meeting as chairman, but you've done a fabulous job for two years. It's been an honor working under you. Appreciate that.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Mr. Ingram.
Mr. Evans, Matt, we've been a friend for a long time. And it's such a breath of fresh air to have you come before us and give us your legal expertise. And it's an honor to be able to work with you, and I appreciate that so much. My dear friend, Vince Shorter, we're going to twist your arm. It's not over with yet, but we appreciate you wearing two hats and serving us as well as you've had. You've brought a lot of peace, a lot of joy to our employees, some great decisions, great leadership. And I know personally, I'll always be grateful for that. So thank you so much for your service. And you do a pretty good job as a treasurer as well, but I thank you so much, okay? We didn't specifically honor Roger Uin for his retirement from ministry of White Oak Church, but Roger, likewise, has been a friend of mine for about 40 years. And I guess he's been a preacher for about 50, so, but I wish him well. And I'm so proud of the Miss Carter that we recognize and the girls volleyball team at Tunstall. And so having said that, I hope you all have a wonderful Christmas. As long as you remember what it's all about, you'll be okay. It's not about the gifts, is it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Mr. Height?
I'd just like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Thank staff, congratulate, crew that won the VACO- that won the VACO Award. That's, that's a big accomplishment. I'm very proud of y'all ladies. I'd like to thank Mr. Shorter for helping us out these last few months. Matt, welcome. Enjoy having you onboard to help us. Look forward to that. And just want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
All right, I like it. Thank you, Mr. Height. Mr. Tucker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to express my gratitude to, to the staff for all the work and the heavy lifting that you all have done during the course of the year to make us look good as we sit here on the dais and putting these meetings together. I want to thank also the public for coming out. You know, that is, that is so necessary today, public engagement in terms of how we actually move the county forward. So we appreciate your presence. Like to thank Mr. Evans for joining us, and I look forward to working with you. Also, Mr. Shorter, we appreciate your time in the seat as the interim county administrator. We really, really sincerely appreciate all of your efforts. I want to say that, you know, I could sit here and enumerate all of the meetings that I've attended and all of the functions I've been to, but there was one that really stood out and impressed me the most. And that was, this past Monday, I went to the Advanced Training and Defense Manufacturing Graduation. And there I listened to, they had two student speakers to represent their class, and it was very inspirational, and I won't say it was a tearjerker, but I got a little misty because the, the last young man that spoke, he talked about the fact that he had lost his way in life. And he also talked about he did not even know where Danville, Virginia was, or Pennsylvania County. And he was sitting in a bar at that moment, and he saw a commercial for this region. And he came to this region to be able to turn his life around. And, you know, what, what a wonderful story. And, you know, for Pennsylvania County to go on record in terms of being a place of second chances in life. And I just, I just want to applaud all of the economic development and all of the labor of all of the people coming together and putting in place, you know, these facilities, these great opportunities within this county, wherein people from all over the world will come to a place called Danville, Virginia, or Pennsylvania County to get a leg up in life or get a fresh start. I mean, that speaks volumes about the community and the leadership that you are living in right now. And I say to all of us that celebrate Christmas, Merry Christmas. To those that don't celebrate Christmas, I say Happy Holidays to you, and I hope you can experience the same joy that we have as Christians. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Mr. Dudley?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I want to first of all welcome Mr. Matt Evans. He's done a wonderful job to this point. Thank you so much. I have known him. I am on Department of Social Service Board, and he is also there as an attorney. I've got to, I've got to learn him, and he's, he's just, he's going to be a good addition. Thank you, Matt, for, for being willing to do this. Mr. Shorter, thank you for your service. We got lunch tomorrow at eleven-thirty in Alta Vista, and you're still paying? No, I'm just kidding. But no, thank you too for your service. I appreciate it so much. I talked to him, and he needs a break, and that's, that's what he says, but you know, I really appreciate everything you've done to this point, so thank you. Also, the little short lady over in the corner, about midway over there, that's smiling and turning red at the same time, that young lady is Diana McFarland. She is our Director of Public Relations. She is, as everybody else has said, she's retiring. So as you leave tonight, speak to Diana, embarrass her real good. This will be her last meeting, and just want to let you know, we love you, and we really appreciate you for, for the service that you've been here with this county. I remember when she was at Star Tribune, and she'd come over here. But I've really grown to really, really like her a lot, so thank you so much. Appreciate all you've done. Thank you to the staff. Hope everybody has a good Christmas. One of my favorite verses is, is Luke two-eleven. "For unto us is born this day in the city of David, a Savior which is Christ the Lord." That's the reason that we celebrate. And I just hope everybody will celebrate Christmas this year for the real reason. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. Well, y'all always steal all my thunder. Time to get to me, I ain't got nobody else to thank. But I'm going to thank everybody again. Thank everyone, the staff, all the citizens for coming out. It's been a great meeting, it's been a long day. Also, thank you Diana for your service. We're going to miss you here. Mr. Shorter, we thank you for helping and working with us. It's been a pleasure. Oh, Mr. Evans, I want to welcome you. I'm looking forward to working with you. I've heard a lot of good things about you, and I've seen them too, so I appreciate that. Thank you. And yeah, Mr. Ingram spoke that it might be my last night. It will be my last night as chairman. I'm going to step down, and I have to pass the torch on to somebody else, but I have enjoyed it. I'm thankful for this board, they're all great, great guys. I mean, we sat here, we make decisions, and we don't agree on everything.
That's right.
We agree and we disagree, but I enjoy working with every one of you. I really do. And I want to thank you for giving the confidence in me to serve and try to do the right thing, and it's been a pleasure doing that. And I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy New Year, and be safe on the way home. And thank you again. Mr. Shorter, do you have anything, sir, that you'd like to add?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to express my gratitude to each of you board members that took the chance on a small-town boy to do big-time things, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve this county. I love this county, it's my home county, and I really appreciated and enjoyed my time with you all, with each of you. And not only you all, but, but I really want everyone to know how great a staff we have.
Yeah.
And how supportive they were of me, and we all pulled together, and we worked well. And just keep in your mind how, how privileged we really ought to have the staff that we have. And thank you all again, and Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shorter. Mr. Evans, do you have anything to add, sir?
Mr. Chairman, it is a pleasure to be on board, to serve in the community that I live as well. I was speaking with Mr. Shorter before the meeting about the very thing that he mentioned. Not that it's a shock, but it is, it is very pleasant to come aboard and to interact with the staff that are both kind and capable and know their stuff, to step in and to interact with individuals that are invested in the community and are doing great things. So it's, it's, it's a pleasure to be part of that.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. All right, with that, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you.